We put in our 600 stairs, so we had to go through the pipe and go up through it. And so they fit that in. Looks like it was been there for a time. So it was worth every penny. Yeah, yeah. So we did that. So Chris um developed the lighting. So that's all time. So all we have to do is
I haven't figured out what's right.
The bathrooms.
Okay.
It's a mistake.
So you have some. I uh my
So we're gonna do copy it on
I have we had two data.
And then half of I favor.
No.
And then half of today.
But I totally
Okay. And It's my little And that extra money is back to that floor.
Okay, guys, I don't have my gavel, but at six o'clock, if you'd stand in the diamond of collective allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming to our workshop. And we'll get started with Mr. Lady.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're you're Do you want to hear, you wanna hear?
I'm gonna let him make it see him.
Alright.
Yeah. Watch your recording.
Okay. So we'll start kind of with the overview of the budget. Um first and foremost, uh what we're trying to do is to ensure staff and students have the resources available to create a safe environment during the pandemic. Um we also have to do that within our physical means that we're able to do that with. Um the Wyoming Department of Education has released the final one hundred A, which is the form that we use to create the budgeting for this school year. However, there appears to be some inconsistencies with the funding allocations. Um they're in the process of reviewing that. Um there has not been a release date of when the corrections are going to be made. Um because of that, our final funding amount could change between now and then. And the upcoming months, it could change between now and the next couple of days. So um what we're kind of talking about is the foundation guarantee with our budgeting tool. We're looking at about fifteen million. With their final foundation guarantee that the that they're proposing, we're at sixteen million. That's a big difference. And so um also just their calculations don't appear to be working correctly with the budgeting tool. It's looking at our local resources, about eight point three. With their final, it's looking about seven point three. So again, just some inconsistencies that we're working through. Um other business managers around the state and myself are just sending the Wyoming Department of Ed emails that this doesn't appear to be calculating correctly for us here at Plat One. Doesn't mean that it's a problem everywhere, but just trying to give them the updates that we know of that don't seem to be adding incorrectly. Um with that being said, these are only funding estimates. Um they're based on current assumptions from data that we've reported to W D E. Um the point of it is to generate and estimate final and fun final funding amounts or guarantee funding for total for next year doesn't necessarily happen before you guys are gonna be presented the budget as we've learned through this year as well. They can constantly be updating that. Um however, we're gonna try and get it as close as we can. We're gonna try and get as close to a balanced budget as possible. If we use the final one hundred A that they have presented, we'll put money back into our budget or into our reserves, just depending on which one they're gonna I'll suggest that we use. Um.
Did they offer any reason why there would be that now uh difference?
Not at this time, they have not. Um I believe they're adding in local resources versus subtracting some of them out. So um like for instance, when we take rental money, that is not something that the state can take out of our foundation guarantee. And I think that's something that they're adding in, but it's a separate line item. So I mean, it's just stuff like that. Um you have to estimate what you think your local taxes are gonna be through the twenty five mil and the six mil. I don't think that's calculated properly, but there's a lot that goes into the one hundred A. There's a lot of backend formulas that they're just checking and trying to figure out where the error is. That it's coming up with such a significant difference between the two.
So when you say that you're talking to other um business managers from around the state. So there are other areas that are their calculations aren't coming back exactly right?
Correct, so if they're if they're not correct with ours, they're not correct with anybody's.
Oh, okay.
So if they have a formula that is wrong, when they enter their data, they're gonna be in the same boat we are. It's not calculating it correctly. Somewhere there's an issue with the calculations on the backend. So they're submitting it to um what we call SIFDAC, which is our School Finance Data and Advisory Committee, and they're seeing issues as well.
Okay.
So that that committee is made up of superintendents, business managers, the state of Wyoming, multiple people. And so they have to run it by multiple. They have to run it by SIFDAC, by PIGS and Autumn, which is the people who kind of developed the model. So they run it by multiple people to make sure that it's accurate. And then they release it, say, what do you guys think? Plug in all your numbers and then now they're seeing with multiple sets of eyes on it of something's not right. So we're working through that with them. Um like I said, hopefully, I'm hopeful that in the next couple of days, we'll have a better I guess better model or
More accurate.
To work more accurate information for us to work with. Um just because if it's swinging by millions of dollars, that's I don't wanna I don't want to adjust our budget too much and then have to readjust. I'd rather um maybe kind of play it out, see how it's gonna work out. But um it has been updated with the twenty three, twenty four average data, the groundskeeper and school facilities, building data has all been updated. The Wyoming Cost of Living Index is updated and calculated. Plat One doesn't really see a lot of adjustments through the living Cost of Living Index. Um staffing experience and education levels have been updated as of May sixteen. Um I do think that that uh the six oh two data was due at the end of June, so I think that they could see some um more updates as the year goes on with this uh staff education levels. Um the health insurance plans were updated as of May eighteen. Um as I said, there's just, we're looking at about a million dollars difference between the two models right now. So that's pretty significant.
So we're kind of right in the middle, so we 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 one way in, you'd have an extra five hundred thousand, we go off, but they're projecting us, we'd have five hundred thousand, we would have to adjust our budget or maybe put in reserves. And if it comes back and they adjust it, then we we try to trim back a little bit on some of the areas. So we're right in the middle of both, which is probably the best place we can be now. Then if we have to look, hey, we have some extra funds, where would that go? Or we put money in the reserves, but we're pretty tight against that thirty percent, so maybe we don't wanna put money in reserves. Um so that's kind of where we're at, right in the middle. I think it's the best place to be to find hopefully the real real funding source or number so we can move forward.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, uh just a reminder that school districts are funded off of the A D M and enrollment. And I found the following graph uh interesting. I don't know if you guys have seen it yet through W S B A's memo. Plat number one has twenty seven point seven percent of its population over sixty five and older.
Wow.
So um that obviously affects funding when we have an older county. Yep, um so kind of getting into what we're projecting, last year, direct instruction budget was nine point two million dollars district wide. Instructional support was one point six and administrative support, six point one. We anticipated transferring three hundred thousand to the lunch fund. Um this year, we're anticipating direct instruction to be nine point five million dollars, instructional support at one point seven million dollars and administrative support at six million. And transfer uh three hundred thousand to the lunch fund and nine hundred ninety two, two ninety four pass through to Prairie View Charter at this time is what um we're figuring that to be. Uh the following increases to the districts uh were made to the general fund budget. Our health insurance had an eight percent cost increase, steps and lanes for all staff, a salary schedule increase for all staff. Sub school, the sub budget at all schools was increased. Uh W H S is looking to add back in their second secretary. We're looking to add, well, we did add a fourth grade teacher at West Elementary, a sped teacher at Wheatland Middle School. We added in cell phone reimbursements to our tech department, maintenance department and nurse. Extra duty contracts for Glendo, we added back in ag, basketball track and a head teacher. At W H S in we added uh an extra duty contract of indoor track, an athletic director, girls wrestling coach and a wrestling aid. And at Wheatland Middle School, we added in an athletic director. This general fund budget also adds back in the cost of summer school. Right now, that's currently being funded out of R A P for S R three. And that grant is going away, so we have to add that back into the general fund. And then uh Wheatland High School, a point five F T E school counselor. Um again, just art funding shifting it to the general fund as that grant is running out. The following decreases were made to the general fund budget, splitting principals responsibilities, the use of the depreciation reserve for equipment purchases, stacking through attrition, utility costs, diesel costs. Again, we were a little aggressive on our diesel um estimates for uh transportation and so that was a significant cutback. Property insurance going up today, giving us a better deal on property insurance help and a reduction in the district health insurance costs. So overall, our budget is eighteen point seven million dollars, a transfer to the food service and Prairie View Charter, uh three hundred thousand into the food service and nine ninety two, two ninety four to Prairie View Charter. Um overall, just kind of breaking out the budget, um the way we have it currently is salaries and benefits are gonna cost the district fourteen point two million dollars. Overall, for utilities, fuel, diesel, eight hundred fifty one thousand, seven hundred fifty. Overall budget on supplies, six oh one, two eighty five. Overall budget on travel, eighty three thousand nine hundred. Overall budget on professional services, one point five million dollars. Uh overall budget on dues and fees, twenty seven thousand four hundred. Overall budget on equipment, fifty eight thousand five thirty one. Now, you'll notice that I talked about how we were going to use the depreciation fund for some of our equipment purchases. The equipment purchases that I left inside the general fund are all equipment purchases that can be reimbursed. I don't wanna pay those out of the depreciation reserve, we can get money back for purchasing those. So um just so you're aware of that. Any questions so far?
The budget on travel.
Uh huh.
Excuse me. Is that like professional development, travel and activities for
So that's all travel. Yep, that's going to be activity, travel, professional development, that's going to be for uh the school board to attend W S B A conferences, that's going to
Everything.
Everything.
Okay.
All travel, student, teacher, everybody.
Good.
Okay? Okay, um the following is just a breakdown of what the building budget is gonna look like at every location. Um one hundred direct instruction is gonna be a lot of your teacher salaries. Um that's gonna be a majority of that portion. The two thousand instructional support, that's gonna be anybody that provides instructional support. So our district psychologist, our speech paths, our nurse, um any professional development that we have in there. Three thousand admin and support services, this is gonna be anything from your principals to your transportation, to your technology department, to your custodial staff. Um anything that the custodians need, equipment, repair, supplies, toilet paper, all those things are gonna be under the three thousand series. Um so it just kind of breaks it out for you by location. I don't really want to redo every solitary number, so I mean if you there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer if um we just have a question of where does this particular uh legal fees are into the three thousand series, background checks, um.
So what's happening at Chugwater School that there needs to be support, six thousand dollars with the support there?
Um that is just, so even though we leased the school, that is just for um if we need to repair something. Um if the something happens with the fire system and we have to repair that, so they are able to continue, that would be on us to fix that.
Okay.
Um uh huh, so
Okay.
I believe last year it was a little bit higher. I don't have it memorized exactly, but I wanna say it was around twelve thousand dollars last year and we didn't reach that, so I went ahead and lowered it a little bit.
So Jamie, could you explain a little bit the old junior high with that forty eight thousand, just 'cause people are here to probably listen to that later, so we'll tell them that kind of consists of like the utilities.
Yeah, so the old junior high is gonna, the forty eight thousand is gonna be for the electrical, the natural gas, again repairs and maintenance. Um for anything that goes wrong with that water and sewer is what that covers.
Is that is that a pretty solid number for me to hear?
Um I would say that that number tends to fluctuate just due to repairs. Um I know, I think it was maybe two years ago, we had a little bit with the frozen pipes and had to do a little bit more repairs and maintenance that cost a little bit extra. Um we had to rent out a um big trash to dispose
Yeah, it's true.
To dispose of a lot of things that were ruined by the flood. Um for the bursting of those pipes. So I mean, that's kind of year to year, it tends to vary a little bit. Um if you want, I can go back and look at um prior years of what was spent at that building. Um.
So pretty close to that.
Yeah, I mean it's pretty close. Uh huh.
Last year's budget was forty eight one fifty.
Okay.
So yeah, we got a difference of a hundred dollars.
Yeah. Um if you look to looks like we anticipated a little bit higher in natural gas. Um but with a little bit of a warmer winter that we had, it doesn't really surprise me. A lot of our natural gas was a little bit higher and electricity just due to not having the frigid cold winter like we had. Um but we were pretty right on with repairs and maintenance, supplies within sixty bucks. And it's so not too bad, water within a hundred dollars.
And just out of my own curiosity, I may sense people work on that. What is the insurance on that building alone? Do you remember?
I do not.
Okay.
I do not have that broken down as I just have it as a district wide, what we sent on insurance, I do not have it.
Okay.
My building, but I mean, I can check into that for sure.
Thanks.
Okay.
And then I noticed on this, um so the Prairie View pass through is less than it was last year?
Correct.
So what what's the reasoning behind that?
Um the reasoning behind that is so for them, they were going off of what their anticipated A D M was gonna be.
Okay.
And this is going off of
This is closer to the actual.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Then I'm just gonna kind of go here because I wasn't clear on this one. So in your listing of the items that were gonna be increases.
Uh huh.
Um down here on extra duty, then you had employees, Glendo.
Uh huh.
Ag, basketball, track, head teacher.
Uh huh.
That's not all at Glendo, or is it?
Yeah, those are the ones that were added into the general fund.
Okay, and then um wrestling, wrestling aid, that's at middle school?
No, that's at W H S. So um we added in a girls wrestling coach.
Oh, okay.
And this is just from last year. These are all add-ons that were not included in last year's general fund.
But did we not have an A D last year?
We had a Peak High School principal and an athletic director combo position.
Combo position.
Uh huh. Yep.
So then over here then um in the decreases, so this year it'll be, it's still a combo position though. We're doing a separate A D, but we don't have a separate principal for for Peak.
Correct. So that's that's why it's a decrease on this side, as to we're splitting the principal's responsibilities.
So Just saying. So so that's where that comes in, so
Correct.
Just for clarification, for people to know that
Uh huh.
Still being split, it's just a different way that it's being split.
Yeah, and it's a considerable savings.
Hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred thousand.
Okay, that's important to know.
Yep.
Yeah.
It is, because it says A D twice, so it doesn't look like it's saving money, but
Yep.
Correct.
It's because there's a middle school one and a high school one is why it's twice, right?
Okay.
Correct. Correct. Uh huh.
As extra duty.
Two extra duty on tracks.
But we are still saving money.
Correct.
I just wanted to make that clear.
Uh huh, yep. Okay, so then if you go to the next chart, um it just goes over what's the three-year budget summary has been. Um and the differences of increasing by a hundred sixty nine thousand, one sixty five, twenty five at the high school, four forty eight, twenty two seventy four at the middle school, decreasing Glendo, ninety six thousand, ninety six. Decreasing Chugwater, hey, I did memorize it, it was six thousand. Uh West Elementary increasing by eighty one, two ninety. Lakeview Elementary decreasing by nine thousand four oh eight. Little Junior High increasing by a hundred. Peak High School decreasing by a hundred thirty seven thousand, three fourteen fifty. Um district wide, um the district operational, excuse me, services is going to be more of the admin office, increasing twelve thousand five twenty seven. And district wide services, including everybody, would be uh thirty seven, a decrease of thirty seven, eight twenty nine, fifty three. So overall, very close in our budget from last year.
Uh huh, uh huh. So and then just for clarification purposes as well. You have a decrease in the property insurance and a reduction in district health insurance cost, but over on the other page um you stated an overall eight percent cost increase on health insurance, so just for clarification, if we had a reduction in the district health insurance cost, but there was an increase, we're are we still below where we budgeted? I mean, I know like last year, it was a fifteen percent increase on health insurance cost.
Same. Correct. So the increase, so we had an overall cost increase to our health insurance point. The district portion that the district is paying is seeing a reduction.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just wanted clarification.
Okay. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, so that takes care of the general fund. Um currently, like Mr. White was stated, we're kind of right in the middle right now at a negative five seventy six, seven sixty eight is where we're sitting today. So um
That could be an increase.
Could be. I can be more specific, sorry.
Sure.
What what is causing the the Wheatland Middle School to have a nineteen percent increase?
So um
Either everybody else having either a decrease or maximum of four or five percent increase?
So a lot of that can just be
The roof?
No, no, that is not general fund. So one of it, one thing that I know for certain that is middle school is that that we did add in a special education position. So one full brand new teacher.
That went on on your other list.
Correct, correct. And then the rest of it could just be um we're anticipating some cost increase with some custodial stuff as far as or maintenance, I guess custodial is not the right word, maintenance. Um we could have been a little under this year, so we're trying to bump that back up. Um it could be just the cost of what teachers chose for their insurance plans as far as if some teachers chose not to switch, if some teachers chose to take the high deductible. That could be um part of it. Um there was some staffing changes as far as we had a brand new teacher that has since left and replaced with a more expensive, more ex that's not the right term.
Sorry, experience.
More experience.
It's expensive.
Yeah, they were expensive, right? So more experience, um so there was quite a few.
It's more accurate.
Yeah.
Possibly wrong with there.
So do you know if the greenhouse plays into additional?
Yeah. The greenhouse is gonna come out of a different fund
Okay.
Um that we're looking at for that. Um I do know that we moved some F T Es around from um teachers bumping up to teaching more at the middle school than what they were teaching at a prior year. Last year, for instance, they were at a different location for a longer period of the day, where this year they're gonna be at the middle school for maybe three periods a day versus just one.
Is that a dapt of P E because the kids go for it?
Correct, that I don't I don't
I got dapt of P E, so students moved from west to the middle school, so their service provider had to provide more time because of that, because they moved from building to building.
So that's salary side.
So they're, yeah, yeah.
And I think we are looking at um some of our needs in the special education department are going to require us to also have a para, that should also be listed. Um we have a vacancy right now for a full-time para that would be transferred.
But you've budgeted.
Correct, I have budgeted for it, it is not listed in the increase, apologies on that.
Which will be reimbursed.
Oh, reimbursed, yeah, of course.
But two staff, that's that's pretty big in terms of a budget.
Uh huh, it is.
Correct. Thanks, you bet.
And then um, oh well, I don't know, I lost my thought, sorry. I just totally went
Okay, so that takes care of the general fund. Um moving on to capital construction, um I feel like Mr. White and I have met with the state department um in regards to a lot of projects lately, a lot of them are still unknown at this time. So the only project that we are currently aware of that we will be completing in next fiscal year is the Wheatland Middle School roof replacement. Go by the middle school, you can see that there's a lot happening there.
Yep.
Um that's gonna roughly cost us in this year or next year, one point five million dollars to finish that project out. That includes our planning and engineering as well as the construction itself. Um that is the only thing that we are currently aware of that will be taking place next in this. I'm struggling because I'm already in next year, but you guys have a pass of budget, so it's kind of confusing terminology.
Right. So on the roof replacement, I'm understanding that those guys redoing the roof hit a sprinkler?
Uh huh.
Do you know anything about that?
I don't know about the sprinklers at the middle school, I know it's city, doing some boring and some digging, it had some more sprinklers at different locations, but I'm not aware of it at the middle school.
I just think if there's additional costs, I I understood that the main was broken by some, the roofers backing over it and they could just fix it, so just hopefully if there's additional costs that that would be on them if they did have, just saying.
Uh huh.
Yeah, one of the mechanics were was just casually talking to me about that.
And Jamie, that's already that those funds have already been allocated as a component, right, funded.
Correct. As a capital proj- capital project.
Like it's project, yeah, yeah, so.
Yep, so the state is paying for that roof replacement, so. Um food service increasing in the following, health insurance costs, steps and lanes for all staff, salary schedule increase decreasing. Um we decreased the supplies and materials costs just because, um just kind of going off of what our average trends are looking like, we had a little bit over budgeted in that category, direct food costs, commodities costs, equipment. Again, we're gonna be utilizing the depreciation reserve, if there you have any equipment needs that they um need, such as like some ovens or anything like that, we'll be able to use that depreciation reserve for those expenses rather than taking them out of our general. And just some miscellaneous expenses that they've had, um just trying to clean up some of that coding of what's a miscellaneous expense? Let's just be more accurate and take away things out of the budget that we're really are needing to focus on getting it exact. Um major maintenance, um we've received our quarterly payment already for major maintenance from this date. Um the state has all of our funding worked out for major maintenance. Uh we're looking at the following projects, uh The state has all of our funding worked out for major maintenance, uh, we're looking at the following projects, uh. Finishing of the Wheatland Middle School greenhouse electrical work, as we were talking about, that's gonna come out of the major maintenance fund. Um, the dust collector at W H S that you guys had approved, hopefully we'll be getting that here in the next couple of weeks installed and ready to go. Um, the HVAC, W H S and Libby systems that are being paired with the ARP or SR three, um, financial. Costs, and then the weight room light update, uh, Wheatland High School football field project, as you can see is going on in the change order. Number one for the HVAC project and just your overall monthly estimated cost that we use for major maintenance of keeping the schools up to date and, um, running efficiently. Um, looking at our activity accounts, we just continue to look at three year trends. Um, with that, uh, Platt County School District number one is looking at an average of about two hundred ninety thousand dollars in expenses. Um, just a reminder that the curfew charter pass through flows now through our activity or custodial fund. And so that's gonna be the same amount at the nine ninety two, two ninety four, um. I don't know if anybody saw the ad in the paper, but you know, if you've been following Platt County School District for multiple years but haven't been paying attention in the past, you might. Get some questions of why are we spending one point two million dollars in the custodial fund now, whereas we've where we've been like three hundred thousand, it's that pass through now. Okay, just so you're used to, yeah, not an option, but just.
An option, right.
Can't can't designate it any other way.
Correct, but, um, like I said, if somebody's not up to date in the knowledge of the pass through, they might have some concerns of why are we spending one point two in a custodial fund?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Right. Well, misinformation is at a premium most of the time, isn't it?
Uh, special revenue, um. The following are all the grants that Platte One just is, um, utilizing this year, Title One, Title Two, Title Four, Title. One thousand three eight Perkins, six B, uh, six or six eleven ARP, which will be expiring in September. The Y Belt Grants, and then, uh, the middle units the district currently participates in does E W C BOCs and Hot Spring BOCs. Um, will continue to participate in those with the same amount as we have intended in the past. That's kind of the budget overview, um, like I said, we'll kind of go into depth of all the different funds at the budget hearing next Monday night. If there's anything in particular that you would like, um, more explanation on, or, um. Dig a little deeper, and just let me know ahead of time, just so I can have that information readily available, um.
I guess one of my questions might be, um, you know, with the cost of groceries and everything being so much higher for all the rest of us. I was just kind of curious why that number remains consistent with, you know, what we'll have to add to food service.
To the food service, I mean, that's always the big scare with food services, what truly are the costs gonna be?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
The only thing, um, that I truly go off of is what are our average costs, and then try to increase it by just the, oh.
A percentage.
A percentage, and then, um, I just kind of look at, I feel like this year we were a little bit over in some of those costs, but under on our staffing costs, it kind of balanced out.
Mm-hmm. Oh, it balanced.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious, okay.
Yeah, I think I got a little, I think I got a little aggressive last year with the food costs, and so, I feel like this year I kind of had to scale it back a little bit.
I mean, everybody's experienced in that. Oh, okay. All right, well, that makes sense, and. Mm-hmm.
Just cause with the talk of, oh my gosh, food cost, food cost, food cost, and so I think I went a little too aggressive.
Oh, okay, that that's fine, I was just curious, cause I really was expecting an increase there, so I just.
Last year. Mm-hmm.
Well, we did go off for a bit with our food just recently, so we're kind of locked in, and I didn't hear from Marie about huge increases in some of those bits.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, we're kind of locked in on these prices, so, yeah.
Okay, good, that's good, that's good to know, all right.
Okay, well, thank you, questions?
Thank you. Anybody?
Thank you, Mr. Wu.
Good to learn.
Thank you.
All right, so the next topic, the old junior high school building, so, as Jamie talked about, I'm just supposed to, we've had a lot of conversations with the school, uh, facilities commission. Telling us one thing about some of our buildings, I think at one time I told you they're looking at providing some type of walkway between buildings at the high school. That was a interim director, when I was down there two weeks ago, they said, no, that's not true, so, we just get a lot of misinformation, information we're getting is changing, okay? So we did get information about, uh, the money that was put in place to demolish the old junior high. So, I think this this latest was from the Select Committee on School Facilities, it was June twenty fifth. They actually have one point three million dollars to demolish that building. We were a little concerned if that was even enough to do that because of the asbestos and other things in there, what. Our maintenance director told me is he doesn't think that's gonna take care of it, but they were told, they told me this recently, yes, there was another school in a district in Wyoming that had a similar. Building style, same age, same size, and they were able to to take care of that building for that amount. For being kind of new, I wasn't really sure how that got on the list to demolish, cause I think it is utilized by the community and by our athletic programs. Um, and so I come dug in a little bit, I guess that was a request from the district, I don't think it ever went through any kind of board approval. So, the reason I brought this up is if we don't do anything different, they're gonna plan to demolish that, okay? As a school board, you can make a decision, or I can write a letter declining that, those funds. Okay, that would stop that from happening, but we don't get to utilize those funds anywhere else, right, it's just for that project. Demolish it, you have the funds, either we do it, or we say no, if we choose not to, then that building is pretty much up to the district. How we're gonna maintain it, how we're going to provide like utilities for it, all the different things, it's kind of bust because it's considered active, but it's extra, it's an extra building. If it had educational usage, we might be able to do some of those component funding issues, but because of our capacity, you know, we have lots of capacity, we can't say, hey. We're holding health class, a P E class in the gym, we need to maintain this as an educational facility, that's not gonna be accepted by the facilities commission. So really, it's a, it's an active building, but it's our responsibility if it's not demolished. That means we gotta make plans to do that, we can use major maintenance funds, if it was considered extra, that would only be a ten percent of our major maintenance. Since it's active, we can use as much major maintenance as we decide to do renovate or do some of the work that's needed over there, that is funding available.
You can still use the major maintenance.
Major maintenance, yeah, yeah, we can, we're we're checking into the depreciation fund because it is an asset. We put in one point eight million dollars just recently to that fund, we could use some of that money to to renovate possibly.
And by renovate, just, I'm sorry, I've been to interrupt, maybe you're gonna answer this question, do you want me to wait?
Yep. Go ahead, go ahead, yeah, fire away.
Uh, well, by renovate, you mean just in terms of the bill, of the portion of the building that we're using, that's where we would spend that money?
I think we'd have to prioritize like what, you know, the, where to use the most, where can be the most bang for our buck in terms of renovation, or.
Mm-hmm.
You know, changing out systems, that might be part of that building, um, we we're not to that point where we're gonna, we have a plan to prioritize that.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
I know through a building inspector, we do have to do something with the windows for Piccadilly, because they're not at the code, they gave us a year to do that, and I feel like that's our responsibility, it's our building.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's just an example of, that probably needs to be renovated, if we continue with that, right?
Right, right.
Um, I know the bigger issues within that building are like the H B A C system, heating and cooling throughout, yeah, so. It would be really expensive to do that throughout, but maybe we could come up with an idea to not do the whole building, maybe part of the building. And I did make a request today to the facilities commission to say, what if we identified parts of the building we wanted them to demolish, and we wanted to keep other parts of the building? Uh, when I was working at Albany County, they actually demolished the old Laramie High School, it kept the gym.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's a possibility, that might really help us, we might kind of be a win-win, like, we know we don't want this part of it, but if you can demolish this, maybe we could add on, or maybe we could renovate. Part of the building we're using, we're gonna see if we get that information from that.
You didn't get an answer.
No, 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 I mean, we responded today when they requested a meeting within ninety minutes, but I sent an email earlier this morning with no response today, so.
So in the. So the original part of the building, how much of that has usable space for us?
I wouldn't know the percentage at all, I mean, but in that building, but like, I wouldn't be able to tell you what percentage of that is.
And when you say usable, are you talking storage, are you talking like an actual class?
Storage from the.
Um, as a pretty expensive storage unit, just kidding, I'm just talking about the middle part that was original.
Gym, weight, wrestling.
Classroom.
That way back in nineteen twelve, whenever we built it, that original piece in there.
Mm-hmm.
Because the, you know, like where the gym is and the all-purpose room, and then the, or Piccadilly is, that's kind of newer, right, that's a newer part of the building, right? So I'm just wondering like, where they had had adult education, et cetera, at some point in the past, how much of that old building is still usable?
Right.
You know, because to me, you know, when you have the water main break in that middle section, and that all of those expenses that we incurred as a part of that. It's actually taking away from our ability to to utilize funds, you know, somewhere else, right? So, I just wonder, you know, are we getting to a point with that building, the original old building, I'm not, not talking about the newer stuff. Or the gym, or the, you know, cause maybe if they would allow us to kind of work around some of these things. I, my only concern is that, and and trust me when I say, I have sentimental value to it as well. That middle part grew up here, like a lot of us, went there, went there, and, you know, one through four, went there, six, seven, eight, you know, I mean, so.
Slidery, slidery. Yeah.
I taught there.
But, but at what point does it become really not feasible for us to keep spending the money? You know, in that middle section, because, I mean, if you're gonna spend money, it'd be better, maybe, I, this is just my opinion, just throwing out some opinions, maybe it'd be better to throw it at the parts that we use. Right?
Yeah.
So I don't know, I I would be interested to know what the state would say about that, and to have that complete inspection, you know, that says, is it even safe? Right, because it it was condemned, wasn't it?
Upstairs was.
The upstairs.
From what I, from what I recall, the upstairs were condemned.
And do you remember why, what they said, you know?
Um, I'm Bill Murphy, and I'm part of the downtown historical commission, and of course, we think this was a beautiful building from the outside.
Here we go.
Yes, I guess.
Yes, it does have value to our community and a lot of sentimental value, but other value to, um, to make our community a better place. And I wondered how much rent you get from, I mean, doesn't the rent from Piccadilly and, that doesn't the, I know we do the backpacks, that do we pay rent for that, or? Aren't there different, eh, places that?
Just one, just Piccadilly?
Just Piccadilly is only income from. And the other question I had is, I know that there's a, a real need for more gym space, you know, and. Surely it would be more economical to start with that gym than build a whole new gym. Thank you.
So I did not grow up here, and I wasn't here in nineteen twelve.
Nor was I. I just want to clarify that.
It was for, no, no, I was just saying.
I was just.
Um, so, both my kids went to Piccadilly, I know that part, and I know the gym part. And I've been in where the classrooms were, are, were, whatever, once. But are the gym and the Piccadilly space the only places that we use? Like, if you're talking percentage, how much percentage of the building are we using, like half of it?
Right.
It's a two in the first.
I just want the middle part, that middle.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm, uh, my, I have a different question, like, if you have a whole square building, are we using half of it, are we using a quarter, I have no idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Are we using a little bit of it, are we using a lot of it?
Shall we do that?
Because.
Yeah.
And do we need to use more, so, I mean, I, there's more spaces that we could be using.
Yeah.
If we're gonna keep it, if it's not red dam, yeah.
It's not condemned.
I don't think the, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine, this is a workshop, you can talk.
Not like, oh, sorry.
This one you can't, next week.
Yeah, it's a workshop.
Sorry, um, I don't think the old side has HVAC or water at all in any of the classroom side anymore. I don't think, because they boarded up from like the Piccadilly side, they used to have the vented doors. So some of that heat would prevent the pipes from bursting, and that obviously didn't work, and so now, I don't think there's any water or. Heat and air conditioning, I I don't think there's any on that side. Is my understanding.
Mm-hmm. And I know our student, our high school, Wheatland High School Student Council uses one of the big rooms for like storage of materials and prom room, like prom uses that. So it is a storage room that we use, but there is, I don't think there's electricity or water.
I think it would be interesting to note, like if student council uses it, like you were talking about expensive storage unit, how how many do, like if stu- student council has one classroom.
Student council prom, yeah.
Backpacks have another classroom, like how many, like if we've got ten classrooms being used, you know?
We need it, we really need to see how we're using it, or it looks like there's a lot more, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just need more information.
Where where would we put that storage unit?
We need more information.
Yeah.
Or storage.
It could run around on time crunch, like we have to make a decision, so we have several months or as much time as we need to study, so we should just bring it to your attention then.
We need.
Do, is there a timeline when I'm telling them, no, we don't want to demolish?
Uh, when we talk, Michael, Renan, who works with us quite a bit, said, oh, you can do it in the spring, another person said, we'd like to know before Christmas.
Oh, that's funny.
Okay.
That we're gonna turn back the money, so I might go to Christmas, but not, even that's not real hard, cause they don't move real quickly, I think, so.
So there is a timeline on that.
But I don't think, that's nice for you to know, now, cause we're not in that time crunch right there, so I think, questions you guys have, we can come back to the answers.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
If we wanna do public comment, to really get it out there, like, should the district do this, you wanna hear your opinion?
Yeah, what you wanna do, yeah.
Come to the work session and give us your opinion, if you guys do more of that, I think gym space is pretty important, I think the community access to the preschools important to the community, so.
Right. Right.
Yeah. Right, that is.
Outside of our education realm, it's it's used by recreation, I mean, there's a lot to that building.
Yes.
And if I, if I may, sorry, um, I I would argue that we are using it for educational purposes. For years, we have said that our extracurricular activities are an extension of the classroom. And having coached for twenty plus years myself, I firmly believe they are in fact an extension of the classroom. Okay, I I coached for twenty plus years, I cannot tell you my win-loss record, I don't know, I didn't keep track of it, wasn't important to me. The the wrestling that we're teaching in that room, that's an extension of our classroom, the cheer team, the practices in the gym, that's an extension of our classroom. I think we could tell the facilities committee, we are in fact, that is an educational purpose building still. Even though it's it's also a community purpose building, I mean, we've got, we've got our pickleballers in there almost every day. Um, I've got a group of adults that's growing to thirty to thirty-five adults on Wednesday and Sunday night getting together to play basketball.
That's all cool.
And bonus, we're not having fistfights with it, so that, you know, that's a cute seal, but. I I would beg to differ with anybody that tells us we're not using that building for educational purposes.
From the facilities come, from their definition, extracurricular does not fit their definition, and even if it did, we have enough capacity through the district, we don't need that space, that's the difference.
Right. Right. Right, right.
Cause you're you're exactly right.
And I do, I do think that that you guys are on to something here, and I think that that maybe, uh, and and again, I I would agree with the with the historical downtown people, that's a beautiful building. On the outside, um, having been in there to to have to, you know, we we pulled some stuff out that that Parks and Rec was storing in there, you know, we just, we just got it out of there. There doesn't appear to be electricity, we were in during the daytime, so we didn't really need it in that classroom section. But if there was a way, and then, you know, looking forward down the road, may maybe we're able to add on. A secondary gym that that could be utilized, you know, so we don't have practices going until nine and nine thirty P M.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on school nights, that we, you know, I mean, I think, I think there's, there's a lot of options other than just complete demolition, and now we have an empty city block city.
Right.
Um.
Well, I don't think we're really looking at that, I think, you know, like at least from my standpoint, if we could save the gym, the all-purpose room, the new wing, the newer.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I I'm just trying to figure out what, you know, what what is cost effective, because, you know, there is a responsibility to, um.
Yeah.
Be prudent with taxpayer funds.
But what I heard you say initially is, how many people are paying rent, and if we do make change, if there is areas that we could. Isolate as being safe, how much more rent could we possibly? How much more rent could we possibly bring in as a a continuing revenue?
And I was just going to say that in um three more years, it'll be a hundred years old. And in the next hundred years, I think that you could be very proud that you were the school board that saved this building. That could be your legacy.
Yeah, I I really would like to to see it's 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 an epic building, I hope there's a way we can do it. It is, it is a shame.
Yeah.
Cause it looks, at least from the outside, very sound, I mean, the brick, everything looks sound, you know, it it is.
Right. Right, it's a pretty still way down.
It truly is, yeah, would, I would, I would personally love to find a way to keep it. Besides, we're in their pickleball office every day. So we really, there's a very.
In the all purpose room, is that where you do that or?
In the gym.
The gym.
The gym, and there's a large group, you know, probably fifty, sixty people utilizing that, not at one time, but there's a large group. Older people, which may want to invest also, you know, because they are retired and they may have some finances, you know, to.
We totally determine it. We sure.
Invest. Because it is a club, it is a pickleball club and you could possibly charge us. Just. Cause we're, because we are paying and there is extra, I already know that.
So I don't know, I just want to have the numbers, you know, like what what the costs, you know, like how much does it cost to heat?
Yeah?
Yeah.
Um, if you're not doing the classroom section and you're just doing, you know, the. The gym part and the all purpose room, I mean, obviously there's electricity in all those places and.
And cooling. Then the updating, if you were to use those.
Yeah.
And restore that where, yeah.
I mean, that's kind of down that road, we'd have to find out what that might look like, I guess, just more information, cause it's, like I said, I mean. This is my city too, you know, I've seen that building there for multiple years, it is for me, but you know, it's up to.
Yeah.
Have to weigh out all of the pluses and minuses in my way of thinking.
Sure, I've seen.
I was surprised that it was so low, that it was only forty-eight thousand dollars to maintain, that's pretty incredible.
Yeah, when you look at, when you look at the the water breaks that you dealt with and and things like that, that it weren't, it wasn't a six-figure number, is actually kind of surprising to me.
Mm-hmm.
Jamie, how, excuse me, Mrs. Wilson, how has that absorbed, those water main breaks and, you know, the lines and all that?
I'm sure just through excess throughout the general fund, it wasn't.
Through the general fund.
Um, so my question to you, Ms. Hoffman, is how many years of utility? Cost would you like me to go back?
Well, I I think for, you know, a five-year overlook would be fine, you know, that we should be able to average that out, there're gonna be some lower years in there, some higher ones.
Okay.
Correct.
And then we need to look at future, another five years and if we updated and brought in. Use, what would it cost us for maintenance then, and if returning it, if we can, if we have money for major maintenance. To update and improve use of the building, you.
But you can't, but we can't use it in the in the classroom section, right?
Then that.
We use it anywhere in that building, we pipe up the condemned power, but since it's an active building, we can use the major maintenance funds.
But yeah, how will we update it?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and there's not a limit to that, if it was an extra building, then we'd be limited by ten percent each year.
Yeah, and we've got that.
Well, it's a lot to consider, isn't it?
So I truly yes.
Yeah, it's.
It truly is.
Two, two questions, one, on the going, if you went back five years.
Mm-hmm.
Would that be far enough back to when like E W C was using some of those classrooms, how far back would you have to go? To when that electric and that water and all of those utilities were being used?
So E W C, if. I were to, I would say E W C moved over to the high school around one eighteen, do we?
Two or ten.
It's been longer than five years, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's been longer than.
Why did they move?
But within eight.
So I guess for me, I would wanna go farther.
Just to help with that class of. Using utilizing our building that we have or are, we already have the water, getting the bathrooms available for when they have nighttime classes, that type of thing, so.
And it had to do with the boiler went out, that was when the boiler went out.
Yeah, and so I don't know when the electricity was turned off to the.
And their boiler was associated.
Yeah, I mean, that's gonna take some. Digging into some history because.
Digging down.
And the cost of utilities are so different.
And you're kind of busy right now, right?
I mean, I have a lot, I.
No, no.
Yeah, that's.
We don't, we don't need it next week.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, not gonna happen.
I just gonna say, Kim, let's, why don't we take a step back and let's. Make a list, even if we don't do it all tonight, let's make a list of some things that we need to know. Um, that we can have ready for like our next workshop. Um, and we can send an email or something and then. Try to get a little bit more information, so then we can plan forward on basically, what does it look like if. You know, we have, we have kind of three options, the way I say, we can totally destroy it, let the state destroy it, we have an empty block. If the state allows us, we can destroy part of it and then we can renovate part of it, or. We take on the full, full responsibility of the of the update, so, you know, what.
We take up the everything, yeah.
Let's make a list, cause we know we're gonna go home and two days from now, we're gonna think of three more questions that we need to ask.
Mm-hmm, I see that our superintendent's gonna find out, right, about possible partial.
Facility condition.
Yeah.
But uh, I think we should just update and bring in more.
Um.
So was that boiler repaired then, or is that why they had to? Lock that part off?
Um, I believe. They did not update the boiler, then they put a new HVAC system on the roof.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it was only for the newer side, the gym and the um wrestling room. I don't think there's anything, I think there's electricity to the one room where they do the food for weekends, because they have a cooler for their. More perishable items, and I think that's the only place that has electricity or anything on that side. Um, yeah, no, they didn't do anything to the boiler, it's just.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then my second question was, uh. With the issues that we have going on at the high school with the sewage deal, like if that would go awry. And then you chose to use major maintenance for this project, also would those things overlap, right? Or could we, the worst case scenario, could we do that?
So that was one of the topics we talked today about the sewer issue, so it will qualify for a component funding, just like rough sweat. The cost isn't gonna be that expensive, what happens is that the time is gonna take to do all the hand digging, that's the, so if it takes nine months, what do we do not to interrupt educational setting? That's the big issue that needs to be resolved before anything else. We don't feel the structure structures are unsafe right now, there's no crack, there's no indications of that, but we know it needs fixed. So today, we wanted to put this forward, but we really haven't budget for it, so it sounds like next year, that would be part of the. Uh, funding for our district that we would like to push forward as a component, so we can fix the sewer. But we have to figure out, and one idea was they would take, instead of the main line go all the way through those building areas, they would shoot out to maybe more of the open area where they could do digging, like where the lawn's at. And do more of that and not have the main line go all the way through the locker rooms, the library, that whole building. So Michael Burnett and our facilities director, they're looking at solutions to that, so it won't be that costly, but it should qualify under the state funding. Okay?
So, do you don't feel that it would be helpful?
Hold on, interview. I've been, you know.
I I don't think it's gonna be a, I mean, you know, it needs to be fixed, it's been going on for a long time, I guess, with the backup and the locker rooms and those things, but.
Good. Mm-hmm.
It's not, we just need to fix it, but it's not like something needs to be fixed tomorrow. So, but.
Well, if you need, uh, you know, my kids get in trouble and you need an extra digger.
Somebody to shovel.
Give Michelle a.
Yeah, I am not that parent.
Right.
But we have it on the radar now, so it's good, we talked about it on that today, so.
Great.
Yeah. Yeah.
So can we bring a list of questions back next week?
Sure.
And everybody can try their best questions and.
And ask for people that want to use the building.
Mm-hmm.
You know, what uses can we update the building for?
And I think that would be in some public workshops and get the word out to people and how it would be used, so that would be what we would decide how to do that going forward.
Yeah. Yeah.
On what what the committees look like, whatever, how we're gonna do that, but.
Mm-hmm.
I think we need to have a little bit more information, that was a lot of.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of, um.
Any other thing, I have a list going, maybe you do too, but I have a list going, anything else you want me to put on? I definitely talked about the partial demolition, um, the if the sewer situation is gonna be an overlap possibility, although it sounds like twenty twenty-five, we have solutions for that. Um. I guess, just the possibility of more renters, what else do we want to put on that?
Yeah, but what can we do if more people?
If, I mean, ideally, it'd be nice to have someone say, I would like to access that building, that could help the decision.
But it got me seeing.
But I, what I would like to see, um, also is like the, what we want from Jamie, uh, from Mrs. Wilson and Mr. Whitehead, what what historical data do we need?
Mm-hmm, okay. Yeah. Historical.
Uh, the utility cost, um.
Cost.
What is being used, what amount of the building is being used?
Um, I know.
And you know, um. Mr. Toll would have any idea of, you know, we probably, at some point, need to know what needs fixed in there, what's what's our, not even a priority list, but. What's wrong with it, we know the water, electricity.
Did we have the state come in and do an inspection?
I think that must have happened before sometime.
No. Yeah, that would have been.
I don't know if they would do it again, because it was.
Cause that might be something we could access, you know, as far as exactly what's going on with that. Simultaneous, okay, so possibly.
State inspection.
State inspection.
Well, the.
Involved.
Yes.
On building.
I would add to that, what. What was the actual? Diagnosis finding, whatever, condemnation.
Mm-hmm.
What was that worth?
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, it's.
It is now, it sounds, it is now.
Okay. Okay, that would be under the state inspection information.
Yeah, what was their actual.
I mean, that's true.
Thing, and then, since we're in the game of updating sewage and football fields and roofs and.
Yeah.
All the things.
All the things.
When was the last time that gym floor was? Nineteen twelve.
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven.
What?
They resurfaced it a couple of years ago.
But, you know what I mean, if you're looking at it and you're gonna, I mean, we all use, already use it a ton, but.
Mm-hmm.
I think it was said that was seven years ago that it was resurfaced, it was like right after I moved in.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Uh-huh.
But what a service to the community, you know, Linda Fabian suggested apartments or something, but we don't really need apartments, so we, what do we, but. Look at all the need we have for all these activities.
Or that's what we need a year or more, they would love.
We do need apartments. I mean, that's, I wonder, okay.
So you'd have to have investors to to do that for, you know, that, it's not feasible through school funding.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Like, yeah. Yeah.
But that is, I guess, a possibility to rent or option.
Yeah.
Yeah, other other uses that can like.
I'm running out of individual classes first of all, and our third.
I, you know, I just know when based in electric brings all those people in, it is almost impossible to get our room of any wish it wants, if we run out.
I think the one that we're talking.
So that would be like to us.
Living. Quarters versus having, yeah, five-year-olds, four, three-year-olds running the halls.
That's what. You know.
Right. I I would agree, you don't want strangers living in a place where we're using for children, like that makes, I don't think so.
Access to children.
I I, I don't, that might be.
Yeah, so from keep, that's where we'll have to kind of decide what the use is gonna be, cause it would be one or the other.
Like businesses or things like that.
Mm-hmm.
Be a different thing, but. I don't know that streaking from the shower is gonna be an option.
And if the gym could be rented out, isn't that a real many made, or would you for tournaments, I mean, everybody has all these tournaments. That travel around to different towns and they have to pay for the gym, don't they?
And well, we we do use it for the Parks and Recs basketball.
We do, and and.
Tournaments.
And no, we don't pay any rent, um, but we do have a. Working agreement with with the schools, we we use their facilities for our programs, we do the prep and stuff on all of their softball fields and things like that, there's. There's no money exchanging hands there.
It's resources and ties.
Yeah, we just, we we just have a working agreement that that's that's been in place or a handshake or.
Sure.
Unwritten for a long time, but, you know, it.
But you would like to see.
For kids events.
I would love to see that continue, um, if if we're gonna host an adult basketball tournament in there, absolutely, I think we should pay you some rent. Um, as far as a youth event, like like what we currently have, um. You know, half of half of the money that we take at the door goes to the Lions Club. Um, so we're we're not making a ton of money on that, that, uh, as it as as it would go, if if we were gonna put together an adult. Three-on-three tournament or something like that and use that gym, absolutely, I think we should pay you for that. Um, but we also do some extra things, uh, we we do give the custodians a a nice tip at the end of our basketball tournament, cause they're there all the time. And anything we need, they just take care of us, so, um, we try and help them out a little bit too, so.
Can I have a pickleball tournament? Have people from all of the state.
It's just not large enough probably for a tournament.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not, we make it, we make it work, but to have three courts. Simultaneous like that, where there's no divisions, it's far from ideal, yeah. Over thank.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody. I think it was a good start to a long discussion. The input. Yeah, just need more information.
I might have to go like. One week, we gotta make a decision or even a month or whatever.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you for putting the fire in the fire.
Yeah.
Cause it's complicated.
It is complicated.
Yeah.
But I I really, I like the idea of a public session just specifically for that.
Yeah, what do you wanna see, what does it look like, here's the numbers we have to date, yeah. That will be forthcoming, okay, we'll get some, a list of questions and we'll have them next Monday. All right, all right, and anything else that anybody's heard? Regarding either reason, okay, we're getting ready to adjourn, before we do, um, the board has to have a. Discussion with the super in July per policy for the superintendent's evaluation, so when do you guys wanna do that?
Yeah.
Per policy for you.
Can we do it, yeah.
We're all here to the board meeting, thanks, Jamie.
It does have a good.
Works for me.
That that would be super.
I like, I like prior to that.
I will not be here for well.
Alright, thank you for coming, appreciate it.
So would you rather do it after?
Is it gonna be a long?
No, I've already told you.
No, we have to discuss and.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I think I'm.
We just have, okay, so, before or after, Chase will be here at that meeting, he wasn't here at this one, so. Um.
If it's if it's after, so be it.
Yeah.
So can you?
Makes it easier for me.
A session or what?
No, no, we just have the other policy door states that we have to discuss with you, what we're going to evaluate, what we're coming for.
Before, hold on before I get to, future goals, I got you.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Okay, five o'clock.
Five o'clock, next week.
Next week, continue a break between the two meetings, so five o'clock next Monday, um.
Monday.
So it'll be a work session.
Yeah, it is a work session.
Work session and then board meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it'll be that, just, um, any, that's like our, where we can just chat too, so if you have anything coming up that you want, let's. Bring it up. In in the way of, um, just future. Whatever it's good, yeah. Okay, so everyone could individually email you to if they had any thoughts, right? Yeah, we bring them up then, and then, um, Amanda, if you have any thoughts, I'm, we're just gonna. Get them done and get Connie home before too late, so I that's, I need the executive decision before, we're gonna do it at five.
Before midnight. Thank you.
Um, and then the next one, we will, um, so, June. The next one will be in September, cause we decided to have the roundtables every quarter. Okay, all right, anything else?
No. No, we haven't.
All right, we are adjourned till five o'clock.
Right.
All right.
All right.